I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the panel. May I have silence? And would you please keep in your thoughts the failure of Thomas Cohen, who recently passed away. His wake is tomorrow at Blanchard's. His wife is Dottie Cohen, who was an longtime worker in our cafeterias, elementary school cafeterias in Whitman. She's a hard-working and a kind-hearted woman. This morning, it's been a quarter. I didn't tell you about it. My daughter, H C A, could I have a motion to approve ballot ballots?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept correspondence in the read file?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Public forum. Now's the time for someone to speak about or wants to speak about a subject not on the agenda. Approval of meeting minutes. Could I have a motion to approve the meeting, the open session minutes of November 23rd, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
First item on the agenda is a public meeting with respect to the application of Cohen Solomon, trustee WB Seasoned Donuts LLC slash Dunkin' Donuts for a common vidilis license on the premises located at 26th South Avenue and 281 Bedford Street, subject to final approval by the Board of Health. And the application of Brian and Sue LLC WB Seasoned Donuts LLC slash Dunkin' Donuts for a common vidilis license on the premises located at 811 Bedford Street, subject to final approval by the Board of Health.
So moved.
Is there a motion to accept? Is there a second?
Second.
You are from Dunkin' Donuts. Would you like to just... Sit down. Does anyone have any questions? We're changing ownership of these...
Just changing ownerships?
Yes.
Have any questions?
We're gonna go with Sizini Discount, right?
Do you have any questions of us?
I do not.
Okay.
How many units is this?
Uh, for what would be two.
The two addresses I read, I think.
Okay.
See, no questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you. Okay, it's almost 6:05. Are you from Whitman Liquors?
I am, yes.
Ah, great. Step up. And your name?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Matthew Porter.
Matthew Porter. This is a public meeting with respect to the application of Makshuruda, Makshudra Incorporated, doing business as Whitman Liquors in connection with the all-alcohol packaged goods store liquor license for a change of location from 421 Bedford Street to 682 Bedford Street. We had approved an application submitted by Whitman Liquors in April to move from 682 Bedford Street to 421 Bedford Street, and we approved it. And now they're moving back. That's the way I understand it. And in order for us to approve this move back, the ABCC has asked me to ask you a couple of questions and record the answers. Why are you requesting reversion back to your old address of 682 Bedford Street?
So we're under agreement to purchase 421 Bedford Street. The board had approved that transfer, so did the ABCC. Unfortunately, at the last minute there, the seller of that real estate terminated that transaction. So we've been trying to see if we could do anything to piece that deal back together before undoing this whole entire process and going through the town and ABCC. Unfortunately, that's not going to happen. So essentially, all that's before the board is a technicality. We're changing our location back to where we're currently operating, essentially, just to clarify the record for ABCC purposes.
And the one other question, we need an answer to be recorded. Have any changes or alterations been made to 682 Bedford Street?
Uh, none. No.
Same, same old, same old.
Nothing's changed.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. The next item that was going to be on the agenda was to conduct interviews for the position of Assistant Town Administrator, but because of some developments, we're postponing those interviews until the evening of January 4th. They'll happen at 6:00 PM. Does anyone have any questions?
Just, well, maybe you can, with the new applicants, send us their resumes so we can...
Sure.
I'd copy, so we can... Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and they're not actually new applicants. They're people that have applied before.
Right, yeah, that's what I meant, yeah.
We're rearranging things. New business. Consider extending the closing time for clubs and common vidilis liquor license holders to 2 AM on Saturday, January 1st, 2022, for New Year's Eve celebrations. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There a second? Any discussion?
No, it's a yearly thing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Whitman Area Toy Drive.
Yes, I just wanted to briefly update and, you know, anyone out who are residents in Whitman, who are listening or watching, I just wanted to trumpet a little bit the great work of our public safety officials, the police department, police staff. As part of the annual toy drive, the Whitman Area Toy Drive, organized by the police, seven cruisers were filled with toys, two fire department ambulances. And if, so it was the most successful year yet, according to the organizers. And if anyone is still in need of a toy for their children and aren't able to afford one, you know, for whatever reason, they can contact the Whitman Area Toy Drive on its Facebook page, facebook.com/WhitmanAreaToyDrive, or contact one of the organizers by phone, Donnie Westhaver at 781-953-3615, or Jane Plas at 781-953-0642. So just wanted to give, make sure folks knew that toys were available for those in need, and talk about the great work that the folks have done, and the most successful year ever. And the final little piece, I'd say, is that at the library, there is a wrapping station, so that's free of charge to any resident. So if you are in need of that toy, you can pick it up through the Whitman Area Toy Drive. And, you know, if you're in need of some wrapping materials to make sure it gets properly wrapped, you can go and do it. Do that whenever the library is open, during the library hours prior to the holiday.
To wrap toys for the toy drive.
For anyone. So it's there, available?
If I had stuff I needed to wrap, I could just bring them to the library and...
You could.
No, I'm kidding.
You could.
I wish I had known that a while ago. Thanks, Lincoln. Old business, call first... Oh, no. Old business, under old business, we added something, COVID-19 update?
Yes. So I just wanted to speak to the fact that for the last seven weeks, our positivity rate has risen week to week. These past two weeks, for the data through this past Thursday and the Thursday before that, it is above 10% positivity rate of those being tested, receiving PCR tests. So it has plateaued a little bit in the last two weeks, but plateaued at a alarm, you know, pretty alarming rate in terms of positivity. Our vaccination rate for those eligible to be vaccinated in the age ranges has continued to creep up about 1% each week. Now Whitman is at 63% fully vaccinated. But, you know, that's sort of the data. I know I've certainly been in close contact, Chief Clancy, who's here, has done a ton of work in addition to our town's clinical, COVID-19 clinical coordinator, and the health department in making sure that we have available booster shots, booster clinics available. In the last two weeks since I last gave a report, you know, at the selectmen's meeting, there have been 300 residents who've received their booster shot through the Whitman Emergency Management Agency, through the Whitman Fire Department. There are two more booster clinics scheduled that anyone can go on our brand-new website to sign up for. Those are on January 5th from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and January 20th from 2:30 PM to 7:30 PM. So also including some evening hours for folks who may not be able to go during the day. So that's, you know, one piece of what the town is doing to address this, you know, like, as I said, pretty alarming increase in positivity rate. Certainly, the positivity rate has been climbing throughout Massachusetts and specifically in Plymouth County. But, you know, those are the two, you know, the primary step that the town's pursuing is having these booster clinics to make sure that the booster shots are available. We have information to suggest that first and second initial vaccination shots are still, continue to be pretty readily available through local pharmacies and local providers. And in addition, that there's no severe shortage seems to be in PCR tests at local pharmacies for those who need them. There has been, you know, this board knows that the state did choose to purchase rapid tests for communities in the state where a, where more than a certain percentage of residents in those communities are below the federal poverty line. Whitman is not amongst those communities. However, we have heard from the State Department of Public Health that in January, we don't know when in January, but that in January, we, the town would have the ability to purchase much cheaper $5 rapid tests. We've been having conversations, I've been having conversations with the fire chief, with Chairman Kowalski some, again with the town's COVID-19 clinical coordinator and the health department to figure out, you know, is it, would it be wise for the town to purchase some rapid tests? And, you know, is that something that we would want to use our American Rescue Plan monies for? That would be the natural source of funds to purchase those if we did decide to do that. So, you know, those are the things that we are doing to address that. And then, you know, just wanted to make sure that, you know, this was on the agenda in order, if there was any desire to have a conversation about other things we as a town might do, like as we, you know, as we have in the past, as the board has in the past, considered a mask mandate, considered the closure of buildings or the partial closure of buildings, so that buildings are only open by appointment only, vaccination mandates, et cetera, et cetera, you know, possibly having meetings online again, et cetera. So just wanted to give an update, you know, primarily about what we have been doing and, you know, what may be under consideration.
Thank you, Lincoln. We can open it up for discussion. Yes, Brian?
I listened to the president's speech today, and he came out saying that they're going to buy 500 million home test kits, and they will be available sometime in January, later, I think, rather than earlier. And there's going to be an ability for people to go online and order them and have them sent directly to their house. I guess it's more informational than anything else. I was shocked at the amount that they were buying, but apparently, volume discounts, I don't know. But I thought that was a great opportunity because I've, I tried to get some over the last few weeks. You know, I did wind up getting three or four of them for family members. So they are scarce, to say the least. So it's good news.
I think shipments, there were shipments today to CVS and Walgreens. So there are some available right now. But let's take this one at a time. What about the idea of the town purchasing using our money and our COVID money and purchasing tests that we could deliver to people or have people come and pick up? What do you think?
I think it's a good idea.
My only concern at that point would be how are we going to track it? How do we track positivity rates? That's what scares me about the home.
Right. People are doing it on their own?
Doing it on their own.
Well, could we, could we use that in conjunction with what the fire department's doing now and have these rapid tests administered by them, and therefore they could keep track through their coordinator? I don't know. I'm just asking. I know you've got enough work to do, but...
You know, the town manager and I have spoken about this. My major concern with home test kits is there's a 15% false positive.
Right.
They're only 85% effective.
Right.
I would not want people doing home test kits thinking they can go to a family function and I'm great. In all actuality, there is that 15% variant that maybe they're not. And that was my other concern that I brought forth, is how do we track? We send out 15,000 test kits, and we have no means of knowing who's positive or not. Is there a possibility that we could do a drive-up testing site with rapid tests? It is a possibility. I have plans laid out for it if we should choose to move that way. It's just how many, how long, how long are we going to produce it for? And we would be able to track it at that point if we were doing them. But it'll be an undertaking, but that's okay. So just the variation, we saw a big influx. We spoke about it when we didn't get the test kits. The rapid test is not the end-all, be-all test. There is that variance. The PCR is the golden rule. And I didn't want to give people, when we talked about it the other day, I didn't want to give people the false sense of security. I'm good. I don't have this and have them go off.
Right.
When in all actuality, they might. So that was something we've discussed in great a lot this week. But it is something that we could look to do. If we were to do drive-up testing sites, they're currently doing one at Massasoit, and they're actually doing those with state, I believe, state funds, and those are PCR's. It's something we can look into, what avenue we want to go down.
Is the chief mentioned? I mean, I guess the current data seems to suggest that those are 85% accurate, the rapid tests, as opposed to the PCR tests. You know, in the past, I know, I think a few months ago, they were saying, you know, perhaps they were only 65% accurate. So obviously, there's, you know, there's a little bit of an idea about these have become, that whether they've become more accurate or we have a little more data about their accuracy, they're still inaccurate in some pieces. The one thing I wanted to mention, too, when all COVID spending is considered after December 31st, is that there's a difference in how we, we as a town should look at it. And the difference is this. The CARES Act monies must be spent, that was the original, you know, COVID relief bill, the CARES Act monies must be spent by December 31st, and they must be, and they must be spent directly on COVID response issues. Whereas the ARPA monies, those monies, you know, that were passed earlier this year, may be spent on a broader, in a broader context of things. And the likely place where the town would want to spend most of those ARPA monies would be on providing rate relief for sewer rate payers, so that less money would need to be borrowed and eventually paid for by water, sewer retained earnings for the force main project, rather than going, being paid by the rate payers. I would suggest that most of those ARPA monies should eventually, that would be the appropriate place for those to go. CARES Act monies could not be spent, right, on sewer force main. ARPA monies may. So obviously, public health is paramount, and obviously, you know, whatever is the wise public health decision to address COVID is, I think, almost everyone would agree, is the, should be the primary use of the ARPA monies. But anything that's sort of, if in fact it's a nice-to-have, so to speak, rather than a must-have for the purposes of public health, if we don't spend it, those monies could be used for rate relief for sewer rate payers. So I just want to make sure that distinction's clear after December 31st.
One thing, if I may add, too, is...
Yeah, Brian.
The, today I heard some prominent doctors bring forth the information from South Africa that they've already reached their pinnacle, and it started early December. And they're starting, it's starting to retreat. So that wave seems to be short-lived, three weeks, and then it starts to decline. So, you know, by the time we go through that, if we were to purchase, it might be on the downtrend anyway, and we might not need them.
Yeah, the, yeah, go ahead, Justin.
So just to go back to what the chief had said about the accuracy of the tests, put on my engineer hat for a second. So the reason the Binax Now tests come with a set of two is that the odds of two false tests is about 2%. So you're supposed to take one test one day, and then two or three days later, take the other test. So that brings it right in line with the PCR test. The difference, though, is that if someone takes a PCR test, currently, they are unlikely to go isolate at home for three days to wait for the results. So at least right now, I think you're getting a better bang for your buck with the rapid tests, because people will get that mostly accurate idea of where they're at. And then if they follow the instructions, take the second test a few days later, it's kind of a validation. So kind of along those trends, it might be worthwhile to provide some tests to pick up at the library, the COA, town hall, something, if we don't want to go with a full-blown, I don't know.
Yeah, the idea of a drive-in testing place, if it could be implemented quickly, because this, Omicron works quickly.
Yes.
I mean, right now, or I wouldn't want to say, let's talk about this some more in the January meeting. I think we need to decide tonight what to do with it, and something has to happen pretty quickly if we're going to do something. Chief? Chief, why don't you come up to the table?
You're fully part of this conversation now.
Sorry. The one thing to build upon what Justin just said is, a positive with a rapid is a positive. So there is some definitive lines drawn in the sand with that. If you are positive, and it comes back positive, you are positive, there is no need for a PCR. Where it gets a little blurry is, you're negative on the rapid, then the next day, we have been repeating, for town employees, we've been repeating a PCR. We've been getting those back within 24 hours. And to be honest with you, the ones that have been negative have been negative on the PCR, and the ones that have been positive, we haven't moved on with, obviously. I agree with what you're saying. They are supposed to be done the one test, and then a few days later, done again. I don't know that everybody's doing that. I think, hey, two tests. And they got a test for me, and, you know, in this sharing. We can do a public education thing on that as well, to push that out. I don't think it's a horrible idea. I know Brockton's been doing it at Massasoit for quite some time. They've been doing PCRs. I don't know how they worked that out logistically. We work with a company now that we send them out every night, and we've been getting them back within 24 hours, 24 to 48. But for the most part, they've been 24 hours. And they've been great to deal with. But there is an added cost with that. Each one of those tests that we send out is $60, coming back to the COVID, to the CARES money. But I had some more to add later, but I'll be back.
If in fact, the money has to be spent by the end of this month. That being said, if we order them, and say, the fire department goes into action and does their thing, we're certainly not going to get all those tests done by the end of this month. And if it goes into January, that means that the firefighters that are doing it, that are on overtime, we cannot apply to reimbursement, right?
Correct. So just to be clear, so if conceivably, well, let me back up. The $5, the opportunity to purchase $5 rapid tests rather than the more expensive rapid tests that are out there available on the market today will not be available until January, and therefore ineligible for CARES Act funding, because the CARES Act funding, that door shuts for sure, you know, midnight on December 31st. So whatever, you know, assuming we were doing the entirety of this testing and purchasing all of these kits and the, you know, the work from our firefighters, all of that would be coming from ARPA monies because, or, you know, generally appropriated monies of the town, because the CARES Act window is shut. Is that clear? Yeah.
Yeah. So this conversation should have been a month ago, in November.
Well, we didn't have the, we didn't have access to $5 tests. We do have, we did purchase some. How many do we have, chief?
We have about 140 tests left.
So we do have some rapid tests, and we did purchase those a few months ago, but that was at a, how much did we purchase those?
I think they were right around $23, $24 a kit.
Yeah, it's, and how did the price come down to five? I mean, who set that price?
Because the state decided...
So the state is...
The state decided a week and a half ago to go out and do a massive procurement request to get these tests. To my knowledge, the responses to that request for procurements haven't come back yet. I think they're, I'm not sure that they are actually going to be $5. That's what we've been promised by the State Department of Public Health, but frankly, I'll believe it when I see it.
$5 is roughly what, so they said they dedicated $10 million to the 2-point-whatever million tests. I think that's where the $5 came from.
But the point is, they're not available now.
Right. I think it's the state that's failing. Okay.
But again, we do have some rapid tests now. We, you know, the chief very proactively went out, and we do have some in reserve, you know, to make sure that we're being as responsive as possible.
Hypothetically, how soon could we roll up a drive-through testing clinic? Could this be like a right after the holidays, before kids go back to school situation?
Andy?
Just something to touch on some points that you brought up, Mr. Chair, and Fire Chief, and Justin brings up. I think what we know by the news, that we're definitely about to hit a pretty big wave of Omicron. And I guess my question was, should we try to get out in front of it tonight, you know, and do what we can to protect our infrastructure, protect our employees, possibly? Some tentative plans for if we say that Christmas is going to be the, you know, the starting point, and then we go two weeks out from that. Do we go back into kind of a, you know, bunkered-down situation for a couple of weeks, where we do get a testing site up, where things are closed, we're kind of limiting interaction here in this building, possibly council on aging in the library? But my concern with that is, is we know if you get it, it's a 10-day quarantine. And if this should, I mean, it seems to be sweeping through vaccinated, unvaccinated. And my concern is, what can we do to protect the infrastructure of the town? And I think we did that pretty well early on. Some may have said we were too cautious, but I think if you look at our infection rate, we did pretty well. My thought was possibly closing, not reopening public buildings a week after Christmas, or talking about a timeframe after that and limiting interactions.
Coupled with?
Coupled with trying to get a...
A test...
I mean, I think, I think we know that in that two-week window, there's going to be a lot of positive cases coming down. And what can we do to protect the town and make sure, you know, the citizens out there have an option? I know a friend of my wife tried to call and get a test and couldn't get in someplace until Tuesday right now. So what do you think it's going to be after Christmas? Should we work on getting this, a testing site up that, you know, for residents?
Do you want to make a motion?
I, I wouldn't...
Probably a couple of motions, but...
I have no problem making that motion, a motion that we actively pursue getting a COVID test site up and running with public safety within the next two weeks after Christmas.
When they, as soon as they can, after the new year, right? You thought the new, after the new year, right, chief?
Yeah. So my only concern is there is a limit on them right now, although I have some in the office. I know that we could probably purchase those at a higher value, but if we were looking to buy the ones that the state are going to provide, I believe we are pushing this down the road a little bit. I'm not quite sure. They were talking after January 1st, but I'm not quite sure how far after January 1st it'll be. I don't want to make promises that we will get a testing site up and not be able to get tests. It's something we're going to have to do some research on in the next few days.
Well, getting a testing setup, a testing site set up as soon as the state can furnish with it.
Furnish the supplies.
Supplies, right.
Work out logistics with the membership and stuff, too. I'll confirm with everybody that we're still good with that, and we'll move on.
Just to add to that, so I had another conversation with our health inspector, Dan Kelly, about this today. And, you know, he is in close contact with DPH. They say January. We don't know. You know, and I think the feeling amongst the local health... We don't know. You know, and I think the feeling amongst the local health departments is probably mid to later January. But, but just to be clear on, you know, well, maybe that, I don't know if that.
The sense of Randy's motion is as soon as possible.
Yeah. And with, and just to be clear, as soon as possible with the lower-cost rapid test kits that the state says will be available, with that criteria correct?
So I think that's the concern. If we can, if can we acquire enough tests to run a successful testing site? I would hate to have people sitting in line for 30 minutes, 40 minutes, and have them drive up and I say, we're out. I would like to avoid that. I mean, it's a, it's a problem that could come up that we can't avoid, but I would like to be able to secure those tests and, you know, sure that we have enough supply to meet our demand. That's my concern.
I mean, do we have information on our website about Massasoit's testing site?
I'm not sure. I'll make sure.
I mean, advertise it.
I'm just thinking if we could do something for the residents of, you know, if you, resident to.
I have a question about that, because as you saw in the news the other day about Randolph, and there were dozens and dozens and dozens of cars out there, and are we going to limit this to residents only? Or should we? I, you know, I'm bringing it up for discussion, but clearly, those lines at Randolph were not all citizens of Randolph.
I just think, you know, you can see that it seems like the state has kind of cut back on some of their big testing sites, and there's definitely a shortage. So what could we do for the residents of Whitman if, you know, if we can only get 200 tests, and we can, but we're doing something, right?
Right, right, yeah.
You know, it's.
Try to get as many as we can.
Right.
I mean, let's not, yeah. So Randy's, Randy's motion basically is to get a testing site in town with the supplies that are appropriate as soon as possible. Chief thought he could do that. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Is there any further discussion of that? We'll leave it up, we'll leave it up to the people who are, who are managing it to manage it.
Got a question. Did you think, where the state has come up with this, and with the cheaper version, and the most inexpensive version, do you think they would extend the date from December 31st into January because they've come up with a new method? You would think the state would say, look, we want as many people tested as possible, let's extend it, not the end of December, let's go to, you know, to do what they want to do. And then we can turn around and maybe send our firefighters who will be implementing them, the testing. Maybe instead of them coming to us, we go to them, like the senior housing areas, right, where, you know, they can just go into their cafeteria, and we can do it right there. And as far as, you know, a way of doing it, and then maybe having it, like we'll say, in an area where we can have drive-through, whether, you know, whether it's the middle school, or, you know, somewhere. And I just think that if the state comes forward with an idea, and let's get more people tested, that they would come up with a way, because a lot of towns, they won't be able to afford it. So why not, you know, extend it, so?
Yeah, I think instead of trying to manage it ourselves by the seat of our pants right now, I think we ought to do, leave it to the guys who take care of it. And make sure they work with the health department, and the health department's working with our Board of Health. And what we're doing is, we're giving direction. We're saying, this ought to happen probably as soon as possible, given the limitations that you guys have. But let them, let them.
And you think this motion should be also approved by the Board of Health? I mean, this is their territory, basically.
Well, are they talking about it?
I don't know.
Has the Board of Health been talking about any of this, do you know?
Testing sites and stuff? No, we haven't.
Well, Terry, the, the situation around COVID has been getting worse in this town.
Yep. And we've seen that happen, and we've made certain, as the months have gone by, we've made certain recommendations, and we've talked about it, but, you know, we've recommended mask, we recommend, you know.
Yeah, it's not, the Board of Health needs to be, needs to be involved.
Yeah, we're not meeting until next, next week, unfortunately, the 30th, so. I do know, I don't want to speak for the Board of Health really, because I'm just.
Yeah, I wasn't asking to speak for them.
No, but I'm, but I'm going to tell you, Dan has been in contact with the chair of the Board of Health regularly, and.
Yeah, I have, I have total faith in, total faith in Dan keeping, keeping up with that.
We know, you know, we see the same news that you see, we see everything that you see as well, so. I don't think that they would disagree with.
I don't, I don't think we want to get into a situation here where we're waiting on each other to do things. What we're doing right now, if I understand the sense of Randy's motion, he's just saying that the Board of Selectmen are saying that there's a, we recognize the situation is not getting better, it's getting worse. And can we do what we can to alleviate the anxiety of the citizens of Whitman and to protect them?
Just briefly, in answer to your, to your question, Selectman Salvucci, I couldn't agree with you more regarding the funding. I would say, just to clarify that part of it, the CARES Act funding expires on December 31st by act of Congress. But that's sort of beside the point when we're talking about a public health emergency, about which level of government. But just to clarify that point, that's, you know, if they could extend it, I don't think Congress will before, in the next 10 days. The other thing, and obviously that, as you say, Mr. Chairman, the chief, our town's COVID-19 clinical coordinator, our health inspector, one thing I think we could do is purchase at a reasonable, hopefully a reasonable price, if we can find them immediately, some rapid tests, and then be able to have some testing capacity if we can find them, and they're not completely price gouged. And then we wouldn't entirely be at the state's mercy whenever and if these rapid tests are available from the state for $5. So that's, I think, one thing we can think about.
Yeah. I actually wouldn't mind if we pursued that path, to try to get a test, to catch the Christmas surge, even if it's a limited number, and then purchase the, whatever, bulk purchase $5 tests for pickup at the COA during the week for our residents. But I think I leave that, the details to the emergency department, the.
To the people that.
Health department, yeah, the people that can.
How to deal with it, yes.
We can authorize them to spend funds to purchase rapid tests and.
Yes, chief.
One of the things just to point out, some of the communities that did receive the tests, I've reached out, we've talked to them, they have been putting them at their COAs, their libraries, they put them at their housing complexes. So like you were saying, Dan, you know, can we take them to them? We will. We'll put them in their community buildings, we can have them over at the COA housing library and have them available for pickup, you know, in a isolated area, because if someone has a question. Part of the concern is a lot of people that are testing, they feel like they are sick, and they may be. So, you know, if we put them in the community center there, they can come down and get them. They could come over, and we could put them off the side of the COA, I can work with Mary Holland in the housing. They've been great to us and everything. So we can get them out to people. If we can't make the drive-up happen right away, there's some logistics with that, we can, at least if we purchase some, get them out to the high, what we would deem the high-risk areas. And that's very doable.
Okay. Thank you, chief.
Yeah, I have a question for the chief. Now, the home tests, right? Do you think the average person knows the proper way of testing themselves? You know, you're saying some.
The directions, the directions are pretty explicit, how many times you're supposed to swab your nose. The problem with the rapid tests is they tend to, the new ones are coming out, I just realized today, they're coming out with shorter swabs, so it's not as deep a swab. If anybody had the unfortunate to have this done early on, it was pretty, it was pretty uncomfortable, to say the least. These new ones have shorter swabs, and it seems to be a lot lower in the air, in the nose, so that it seems like it's a little bit more user-friendly now.
Is it, is it more accurate? That's, that's the concern.
Well, there's some variables on the people doing it themselves. I mean, even with trained professionals, we did have one come back inconclusive the other day, because it didn't get good enough sample.
That's why I was saying, the fire department, they're professionals.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, all was in favor of Randy's motion? Now, Randy, I think you had another motion in there.
I did touch on another point about trying to get out in front of this, and really, I would make that, happily make that motion, but I just kind of wanted to get the sense of the board, too, about.
Before they, before you put the motion out, just to make sure you don't get, like, slammed?
Yeah, well, my timeframe might not align with everyone else's timeframe of a week or two, or, and again, this is something that I think we should limit people in the building. We can leave it to our department heads to filter, you know, figure out their staffing issues. And we're not looking long-term, but I think there's an obvious surge coming. I think you can see it from Thanksgiving. And I think whatever we can do to temper the next couple of weeks, protect our employees, you know, it's certainly, we don't want to see 10 days, 10 days, 10 days, as, as the progression continues, if people stop becoming positive. So that's my thought, and I was just hoping to get the.
Yeah, we used to have a, we used to say when we can get to the green area, then we can open up things and all that. Well, we've been way far away from the green area for a while. I think, I think Randy's idea and his motions makes an awful lot of sense. Closing up, closing up the building by doing what we did before, by appointment only, which means, Lincoln, how would you define by appointment only?
How I would define by appointment only is, staff is here and in the building, appropriately spaced as far as, you know, social distancing, and having, as we did before June 1st, have all the department telephone numbers on each door to town hall, to the senior center, you know, to all the buildings in town. And if, you know, when someone calls on their cell phone or otherwise, if it's a simple transaction, you know, first, my expectation would be that someone answers the phone, unless they're on the phone, you know, answers the phone. If it's a simple transaction, coming down and helping that person at the door. If it's a more complex transaction, bringing that person in. If it's appropriately socially distanced, perhaps to the office, but more likely, I think, when you're actually having an appointment, I think a better way to do it is to have that person in the auditorium at town hall, the lower meeting room at town hall, this room perhaps, so that, again, you're respecting that socially distanced. And, again, having it be close to the public by appointment for all town buildings is what I would suggest for equity's sake and safety's sake.
Starting next week. Does that make sense? And actually, and it would remain in place until, until a time when things quiet down. And we can't, we can't say, I don't, I agree with you, we don't want to do 10 days, 10 days, 10 days. It's going to be shut until.
We feel comfortable.
Until, until we see things change. Does that make sense?
I think, the only thing is, like I said before about the, how this wave seems to be happening through what happened in South Africa, it seemed to be about three weeks, and then it started to go down. And ultimately, we want our employees to be safe, more than anything. So I think if we did a minimum of two weeks and then revisit it, I think, because we don't want to go.
Yeah.
In perpetuity, you know, I just don't think that's a.
I don't know. I'd feel a lot more comfortable closing it, and then we'll decide when to open it, when it opens, instead of setting it two weeks. We don't know.
Right.
No matter what you hear about from, from, from South Africa, we don't know. We didn't know that in the last week, Omicron was going to become 75% or whatever it is of the infections. We had no idea that it was going to push Delta out and say, I'm taking over. Like, I think it makes sense just to shut it down, and we'll open it up when, maybe we'll open it up when the positivity rate gets down to three or four, like, instead of 10. And we can. I don't know if, I don't know if anyone has a rubric in their mind right now that we could use, but just close, close it. Yes.
I think we are seeing less town-by-town data coming from the state, which might make picking a metric difficult.
Right.
Because now we're, we're basically following Plymouth County numbers at this point, which we can follow, but is not as accurate as the Whitman numbers we were tracking last year. I do generally agree that, yeah, we should probably, you know, take this step and revisit at the next meeting in two weeks. Just see where we're at with the numbers, if we want to put a tentative date or.
We want to become scientists?
Yeah, you know, start figuring out where we're going.
And that's what I, that's what I, that's what I really want to avoid, trying to become something that I'm not.
But would it make, I mean, the chance of opening up a can of worms here, would it make sense to consider masking in town buildings when we're, we can't adequately distance?
Right now, we're talking about.
Which seems like we're taking these steps out of order.
The next step, the next thing I was going to bring up, and probably Randy was too, was what do we do with that?
Okay.
Another thing we could bring up is what do we do about vaccinations?
Yeah.
I mean, all of these things can be on the table. But let's see if we can get through Randy's first, first motion. Does someone second his motion?
He didn't really make one yet, because you were waiting to see.
Yeah, feel out.
I will make the formal motion. I will make a motion that due to a increased surge to protect, protect the infrastructure against COVID-19, that we, as of Monday, what would that date be, the 27th?
27, correct.
Monday, December 27th, close the buildings consisting of the town hall, library, and Council on Aging, and the DPW building to public, except for in cases where appointments have been made. At a minimum, two weeks until our proceeding meeting where we will reevaluate.
Senator, a second?
Let's technically not.
Talk about that?
Yeah. It seems this entire, what we've done, we've followed the direction of the Board of Health. We've always gone with them. Now, we're superseding the Board of Health because they haven't met, but we're going to, we're going to go over and above what's in their ballpark. I, I can't see us, we should be doing that. We have made, through the last year or so, we will follow the, we will follow the direction of the Board of Health, because they're the experts, basically, with the fire chief, they've been dealing with them, about what we should be doing to protect the citizens. And when we ended up closing the building, there was a lot of people that were quite upset at us closing the buildings. Right? And even though we, you know, we did it to protect them, they were really upset that they couldn't do anything. Right? And then you had employees that were in buildings that were empty. Still getting paid, but sitting around, whatever. I don't know. I mean.
I don't know if I can talk.
Yeah, you can speak. Yes.
So I just want to say that I don't believe that statement that you just said, that employees were not doing anything.
Well, I didn't mean, I mean, maybe not here, because there's a lot of work to be done, but.
Yeah. Well, during the closure, I know that my office didn't turn anybody away. The only thing that we didn't do was the commission to qualify, because we didn't feel that that was a necessity. Other than that, I was doing marriages under the portico with no light. We were, you know, I really think that, and I was hoping to talk to you about this anyways, because I don't want to go back to that. It's a very scary time. It's, you know, look at Allison Sullivan, and I don't mean to bring her up, just going to Target. People have changed, things have changed. And I don't want myself or my staff underneath that portico alone at night, meeting people who want to get married. Now, why do people want to get married? Some people need to get married. Some people need to get married, whether they're going to have a baby, or insurance, whatever. It's not our business to know the reason, but there are reasons that people need to get married, and other things, business certificates, people need that for taxes, people need things. We, a birth certificate to get their federal ID. There's just so many things, the list goes on and on. I don't feel comfortable myself meeting somebody in the dark. And it gets dark pretty early, and I don't want Michael and Jennifer to do the same. And I thought about, like, this appointment thing. Like I said, Dan, I'll be honest with you, and I can attest for probably other departments, it made our work harder. We were running from door to door. What door are you at? What door are you at? And we ran around this town hall. We never turned anybody down. I can assure you that probably every department never turned anybody down, so.
I'm not saying that. I was hearing from the citizens, why isn't it open? Why isn't it open?
They're going to say, I believe that they're, you know, the state still has not opened. The federal government still has not opened. They answer when you call, but they're remotely, they are not in their office, period, point blank.
I'm in my office twice a week.
Well, now, when did that start, please, sir?
Legislature is not.
Just recently. Yeah, just recently, so.
Legislature is remote still.
Yeah.
But one thing, and I understand both your points here, it's nine days. That's all it is. And that's a holiday week where probably a lot goes on.
Yeah. Oh, I agree with, I agree with closure, and I agree with all your stuff, but I think that we, like, you know, if I need to have a wedding, people come in, we've got the shields and stuff like that, I should be able to do that. And I know you said meet in the auditorium, but you're not meeting with a shield or protection. So there again, I was going to offer the election partitions that we had. Maybe Todd can grab a couple of those to keep people safe, so that you have some type of shield in this environment downstairs. so that you have some type of shield in this environment downstairs and things like that. And the last thing that I would like to bring up, Lincoln, I know you looked at me when we talked about this, the census is being mailed out. They picked it up today. We can put a flyer in that census for minimal amount of money. The only thing is, is it's being mailed up by the 30th, so it'd be something that you guys would have to come up with right away for informational purposes for, you know, we had talked about this, phone numbers even, just the phone numbers alone would help people. But if you write in there, please follow the town website for updated COVID. I don't know what you guys want to do, but it has to be done quick because they actually, I'd actually called everybody last week or a couple of weeks ago, or last week, I remember when I talked to you about putting a flyer, and we had done it last year with the Board of Health. I think if you can get something, you know, decent together, and he came today, I already picked up the census, but I think between hotting print or something like that, we could probably sneak something in. I can, I'll check with him first thing in the morning if you want me to, as far as that goes, so.
No, absolutely, I mean, I think we should, you know, that was actually one of the things I was going to be talking about in the next agenda item regarding, I think it would be a good idea to have something in there if in fact we can have town meeting on, in late January. But, but certainly we could absolutely put things on there regarding, you know, going, coming to the website for the latest information on COVID-19.
Plus you can pay bills on that website, correct?
Absolutely so.
So I mean, that.
Okay, let's stick, let's stick on the.
So I'm not a fan, like I said, I agree with closing.
Excuse, excuse me, we have a motion that's on the floor, and I don't want to get too far away from that.
I just think we need to be cautious of the employees going out and meeting people. That's my concern, whether it be my office or another one.
Yeah, Dan's point, the point that Dan made that struck me as a, as a good one was the fact that we have always looked to the Board of Health for direction on these things, and we've followed them. However, we haven't heard from the Board of Health.
So.
About any of this, have we?
No, we haven't met.
The thing is, well, that's the problem. There's a, the Omicron thing is something that's cropping up very quickly. And so it's not a problem as such that the Board of Health hasn't met, but we haven't been able to do that. We're meeting.
Our last two recommendations, though, you didn't follow.
Okay. Which ones, which ones were they?
Was.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm not, yeah.
Which ones were they, were they the ones to?
Vaccine mandate on new hires, and I forget the one before that. It was another one, oh, I forget what it was.
Capacity limits, I think.
Maybe capacity limits, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, the capacity limits where you looked at only two rooms and not all the other rooms, and it didn't make any sense to us, and we asked you if you'd make sense of it, and we haven't heard from you about that. We haven't, we haven't gotten an answer.
I've reached out to a select board member, and I don't know if I've talked to Lincoln about it.
Okay, yes, Randy?
I think we got tremendously off track of the point I was trying to make. I think this is a decision based on exigency that we're here tonight, and we know what's coming, and how do you stop it? I think what we're doing is giving the Board of Health time to come up with a plan, to work with the fire chief, and we're just kind of, I guess, limiting, limiting, limiting the battlefield, let's say.
Six, six business days.
Yeah, and we're offering some protection to the employees. And, you know, that short amount of time, I didn't call for a permanent closure. You know, if all of a sudden this tears through the library, that's 10 days for this person, the next person, the next.
Yeah.
Monetarily for the town, it costs us more. Can we get out in front of it? I don't know, I don't know if this motion does that, but it certainly, in my opinion, offers us some protection.
I don't think it would hurt, you know, the infection. I don't think it would hurt us to take this step.
We see where it is.
And it's short term.
We give time for a, a plan.
Yes, thank you. Two brief points regarding the Board of Health. Just so this board knows, our health inspector, Dan Kelly, did pull the members of the Board of Health today on this idea of having a closure of Town Hall to the public, open by appointment only. And the chair, Danielle Clancy, had suggested that perhaps two weeks wasn't long enough. But she was in support of at least two weeks. And the other member, Brandy Griffin, was also in support, is my understanding, of a closure, and obviously Dawn's here, so I'll let her speak for herself. But the other point, I just wanted to make, I don't want to get too off topic, but briefly, just to discuss the specifics of what it means to me to be open by appointment only, is I certainly, the reason I personally would not want to encourage members of the public in offices themselves is, in particular, in this instance, the third and fourth quarter tax bills are going out. They will be in folks' mailboxes the first part of the year. If folks are coming into the town clerk's office to do business in the town clerk's office, they will inevitably want to pay their taxes. That means that we're open, right? So that is why I would suggest that open by appointment only means if an appointment needs to happen, that it happen in a larger space where social distancing is more, is more possible. That is to say, the auditorium, the lower Town Hall meeting room, this room if necessary. I believe we have, we certainly have plenty of surgical masks on hand. I believe we could certainly go out and purchase some more can 95 masks. We do have movable barriers. But that is the reason why I do not believe that, especially in the immediate term, by appointment should mean coming into offices. Because effectively, what that would mean during this time period is that we're open because people are going to want to come in and pay their taxes. That's all, so, thank you.
Okay, well, that's consoling to know that Dan reached out to the Board of Health members, and they seem to be in support of it. Yes, Chief? You have some inside information, Chief?
This discussion started amongst a few of the department heads, myself and Chief Hanlon today, and Towne Minister Heinemann. This, this is, it's cranking along. I mean, we see the numbers, I send them to you every week. I agree 100% with Randy, and one of the biggest discussions related to this is we're concerned about the infrastructure. If it comes through the Town Hall, we're crippled, and our police-fire department, DPW, can be crippled, as well as the library as well. If it gets into our buildings, it's going to cripple us, and the effects on that could be devastating to the town. So that is probably one of the reasons that discussions came up today and brought forth, but I agree with.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion of the, of the motion?
I wanted to ask a question on your motion, did it include by appointment only? Or was it just closed?
No, it included by appointment only.
I just wanted to make sure.
Definitely.
The only concern I have right now is if the information you got from, from Dan was that the Board of Health members seemed to think that maybe two weeks is too short a time.
That's what I heard from the Board of Health Chair, Clancy, from Danielle, today is that.
Following the, following what the Board of Health thinks. And you'll be talking about it at your meeting next week, I imagine. What do you think?
Well, they're going to talk at their meeting next week, and we meet around the time this would lift anyway. I think we can wait for feedback from the Board of Health.
Yeah, because we're meeting on the 4th, so.
Okay, so we'll, we'll do this until the 4th of July, or until the 4th of January, anyway.
Dan almost jumped out of his chair.
That's because he's a patriot, he likes the 4th of July. Okay, is there any other discussion? So the, so the motion is to close the town, close the public buildings except by appointment only, except for visits by appointment only. Until, actually, until further notice, and we'll look at it again at our next meeting on January, on January 4th. And we'll, and we'll also have time to solidify the support or the direction of the Board of Health because they will have met next week. Because you're absolutely right, we've always, Dan, you've always followed their advice, and that's something that's important to us. Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Which brings, there are a couple of other things to maybe talk about. One has to do with the wearing of masks in the building, whether you're vaccinated or not. Now, is the sign still on the door?
It is.
That says, we recommend wearing a mask?
The Board of Health strongly recommends that masks are worn in indoor spaces, I believe is what it says.
Whether you're vaccinated or not, right?
Yes, I believe that says that, yes.
Dawn, do you think at the, at the next Board of Health meeting, you can raise that question with them, whether or not they want to mandate it or still just strongly recommend it? Because it might be, it might be a time now with this particular variant, not shy, not shy away from mandating it.
You want employees and visitors?
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, sure, anybody that comes in, because they're coming into a closed space. So just have, if you could ask them to put that on their agenda, whether or not it should be mandated? And do we want to, I guess it's enough for us to recommend that you have the conversation with the Board of Health? At the, at the next, you can carry that message to them at the next meeting? Okay, great. And the other thing has to do with vaccinations. The Board of Health had recommended vaxing only new people. And I think, was it you, Randy, that had an objection to that? Like, why not, why only new people?
I think that was me.
Am I remembering, it was you? I knew it was one of the, I wanted one of the youngsters, yeah. What, so, what's the thought, Justin?
So, yeah, I was, I was hoping to get some more of a signal from the federal mandate that's going out, and it seems like it's, the courts are kicking it back and forth. Now it's allowed again.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think, I don't know, maybe asking for the Board of Health to consider that as well because they're meeting in a holiday week when not much is going on, and we'll be back right after that. Yeah, consider a.
Yeah, maybe, maybe we look at it and see, and see if that makes sense to the Board of Health to.
We were hoping like OSHA would.
Yeah, right, we were hoping that they would keep us from having to make that decision, right? But maybe it's, maybe it's, sometimes local governments have to make those decisions.
It's been talked about.
Okay, if you could, and then maybe could.
I'm not coming anymore.
Can a representative from the Board of Health maybe come to our, come to our meeting in January?
I'll certainly.
Go over these things, okay, great. We don't have any more motions on the floor, do we?
No.
No, okay, we're done.
So you're getting motion to require a mask or anything you want to base it on, is that, is that correct?
Right, 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 if they, and somebody maybe can come to our next meeting and report on that. Or report to, or report to Lincoln if they can't make the meeting, but. Okay, so I guess we're done with COVID, right?
I think so, I am.
Yeah, I'm done with it, too.
I think we're all done with this.
Next item on the agenda is to call for a special town meeting?
Yes, so the Board, the Board has the draft, proposed draft of the town meeting warrant. There's a couple of quick things that I'd like to bring your attention to. One is looking at the calendar, I think the 24th of January might be, might make sense. However, you know, and this is, we just spent, right, 45 minutes talking about COVID-19. I do not believe an outdoor town meeting is something that we want to consider. So it's something to consider.
Good thinking.
Are we, do we still intend to go forward with the town meeting in January? You know, it's, that is not a decision that would be, if it was to be January 24th, that's not a decision that would need to be made tonight, but certainly it would, it would need to be made by January 4th. So, that's, that's one piece. And I could talk, I don't know if I should stop there.
Now, we, we talked about other inside venues the last time when we had town meeting outside. The high school, I think, was a, was a possibility. I mean, that's something you'll.
Yep, I can check in with the superintendent of schools and think about the high school.
Question?
Yes.
Is that 24th date etched in stone? I mean, do we?
No, we haven't even opened it yet.
Because, you know, I'm looking at it here now as, you know, January 31st is a Monday. I mean, that gives you another week. And then, you know, if you go into February the 7th. I mean, does, does the two weeks matter to the town meeting as much as it matters to making sure we've gone by a little from the?
Yeah, there's nothing special about the 24th. It was just.
Just curious if they would.
Suggestion. This was, you know, and, but, but the key, the key point of it is the state law requires a warrant no, no less than 14 days before the date for a special town meeting. That's, that's the key point.
And, and the desire to get things moving so that the DPW knows that we're serious about this.
Right.
That's why I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to be pushing it out too far.
No, I mean, the 31st is a.
That's a good one.
Another week, like, I agree with Brian when he says this thing's moving.
Sure.
The news of this is, it's moving quick, so we could see, yeah, an extra week could mean a lot.
Right.
So is there a, is there a motion to call for a special town meeting on the 31st?
I will make that motion to call for a special town meeting on January 31st, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
And if things, and if things don't seem to work out as far as the health and how things are going and what we're doing, we'll just have to postpone that town meeting at that time and make it longer, right? We just have to see where we are.
The, and, and I will certainly get back up to speed with the rules about postponing town meetings again. They are long and complex, and then got even more long and complex and complicated in the past year and a half. But we'll figure out what that is at the moment.
Okay, do you want to give, give a quick rundown of what's going to be?
Yes.
What are going to be the topics at the special town meeting?
Thank you, yes. One item that I just learned about today that I would intend to include on the next draft was one prior year bill for $352.50 so that, so that we can pay that last year's fiscal year 2021 bill that I just learned about today. Article one listed on here is public safety ballistic vests. The Board, I think we've had conversations before, and the Board's aware that the police, the vests for police officers need to be replaced, have been replaced, and we need to pay for that. In addition, the, it just came to our attention, I think collectively, Chief Clancy and me, that the fire department ballistic vests need to also be replaced. So that is what that item is. Article two is, would be two budget, proposed budget adjustments. One, the $3,000 from available funds that projected not to be needed in legal services. The zoning Board of Appeals has had a lot more meetings this year, had a good conversation with the recording secretary for the zoning Board of Appeals, and it is clear that that line will be deficient. It is not yet, but that it will be, and that we'd want to make that whole now. And the other piece is just something to consider. It's a continuation of the conversation that the Board had with me at the last meeting regarding the building inspector position. The data regarding our like communities with full-time inspectors. It's some data that I just got back today. I can share a little bit of it if the Board wants now, we can do it at a later time. But that is under consideration, you know, that's, this would not make the decision about whether or not that position's full-time, but if it was passed, would allow for that decision to be made at a, at a full-time salary if that was desired. Article three is the one-year extension of the police collective bargaining contract that's been approved by both the union and the Board. Articles four and five are proposed land donations from the same landowner. One, just to the east of Little, of Little Comfort Circle there, across from Auburnville Way, and the other, just to the west of Hope Memorial Drive. So those would be proposed acceptances of those donations if the town saw fit. And article six is the Department of Public Works building item. A couple of things I wanted to mention with that. This is, this would be the 10% that we were talking about to allow for the creation of architectural drawings and the hiring of an owner's project manager. Chairman Kowalski and I had some communication about making it super explicit that an owner's project manager would be hired early in the process. So I will add that to the next draft, that language, to make that clear. I also just want to point out two other things. One, this is the breakdown of monies from the different sources of funds that we've been talking about at the last meeting. meeting, and the, the other thing I just wanted to mention and make, make clear, this language would, would foreclose the, the other possibilities that were, that had been discussed briefly. That is to say, you know, if a Department of Public Works building was elsewhere, was it, was the purchase of a different building, wherever, this article would make it clear from what I think was the policy direction of the board at our, the last meeting was, is that, you know, is that the, the policy direction for the town is, is to have a new building at its current site. So I just want to make it clear that this language would foreclose those other possibilities, if that's the board's will or not, so. So that's, that's what I have about what's in the proposed warrant.
Okay, so there's, is there, is there a motion? For a special town meeting on the thirty-first? I can't remember if we made one.
I did, I made, I made the motion to call for it.
Okay, on the thirty-first, is there?
I'll second it.
Okay, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the last item on the agenda is to open the special town meeting warrant, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Your second, Justin's second?
Second.
Okay, and the closing date, Lincoln, you have a?
So the, the, I would, I would suggest that a, a closing date could be January second, perhaps, or, or you could set it later, but, but I, I think January second would be an appropriate date.
Okay, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
I think that exhausts our agenda, as well as the board. Is someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Second, second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're done.[1738.26]